Good morning, everyone. I'm Matt Smith, President of the Greater Pittsburgh Chamber of Commerce, and I'm very pleased to welcome you to another in our first Friday speaker series events that we're holding here at the Chamber, which as everyone knows is an affiliate of the Allegheny Conference on Community Development. We are hosting a very important discussion today because we think a central part of our mission moving forward as a region is to compete on the playing field for federal investment or business investment for the Pittsburgh region, for talent, to both attract talent here and retain talent here. We think to accomplish all of those things and to compete and win on those playing fields. It's imperative that we speak as one region with one voice. And as we've talked to our federal partners in particular through the infrastructure investment debates and other economic development discussions, they've communicated to us that it is absolutely imperative for our region to speak with clarity and speak with precision when we go down to Washington DC with asks, whether it's investment asks, whether it's legislative asks, whether it's regulatory asks. And today's discussion is another in a series of discussions that we've had to reach that objective. And we think it's a really important one because we've brought to you today leaders from Westmoreland County, from Beaver County and Green County. And we know that those counties are such critical economic engines for our entire region. And without the success of those counties, the entire region is not going to be successful. And so from the investments that EQT is making in Green County, to the investments that Shell is making in Beaver County, to the investments that ATI makes in Westmoreland County, we want to make sure that we're speaking, as I said, as one region with one voice, because we think it's critical. So we're very happy to have this discussion here today. Before we turn it over to our moderator, Jen Beer, who is, as you all know, is our Vice President of Government Affairs, I want to introduce our sponsor for the entire first Friday speaker series of 2021 Comcast. And we greatly appreciate Comcast's support of the entire first Friday speaker series this year. And as usual, we're joined by Jennifer Clunin, who is Comcast Director of External and Government Affairs for the Keystone Region. So Jennifer, the floor is yours.
Thank you, Matt, and good morning, everyone. On behalf of Comcast Business, I'm eager to hear from Commissioners Belding, Cerriely, and Manning this morning. Hearing directly from our local leaders provides a great demonstration of the dialogue facilitated by the Chamber of Commerce. And Comcast Business thanks our Chamber friends, as well as the leadership and staff of the Allegheny Conference for continuing to provide formats to gather, share, and partner to strengthen this region. Companies of all sizes have had to adapt to changes that have affected their business model, their budgets, and how they serve their customers during this time that's been marked by unprecedented uncertainty. As we all collectively try to push forward our region's economy and opportunities, I wanted to take a moment to share some important information regarding cybersecurity. October is Cybersecurity Month, and now more than ever, we know that all businesses need to be able to protect themselves, especially small businesses. A recent study found that 65% of SMBs have reported a cyber attack. But did you know that two-thirds of all cyber crimes target SMBs? And these attacks can be costly. In fact, 83% of SMBs lack the funds to deal with the repercussions of a cyber attack. At Comcast Business, we partner with our small businesses to set them up for success. That's why, in honor of Cybersecurity Month, Comcast Business Internet is now bundled with our Comcast Business Security Edge product. So what is Security Edge and why is it important to the business community? Well, Security Edge is a simple yet powerful solution to help small to medium businesses protect all internet devices connected to the computer's network and various forms of cyber attacks. Any devices connected to your network via Comcast Business Internet are covered. And Security Edge allows businesses to manage their internet access policies, such as content filtering, scheduling, et cetera, through a simple and easy-to-use portal, all without requiring additional hardware or software. And here's an important fact. Security Edge does not compete against your existing antivirus or firewall protection. Instead, it complements it. With so much on a small business's plate these days, Comcast hopes that these value-added products such as this will give our customers peace of mind and the knowledge that all of their devices are protected. And don't forget, Comcast Business recently began offering a new mobile service designed to perform for small businesses, and it's available to Comcast Business Internet customers. They can enjoy unlimited nationwide talk and text on up to 10 lines with no term contract required for mobile, no line access fees, and there are budget-friendly mix-and-match options, in addition to the speed, agility, and compatibility you need for your mobile business phones and tablets. And finally, I'm pleased to share that our new Xfinity Store will be opening on October 13th in my hometown of Ross Township, right in the heart of the North Hills. It will be at 4840 McKnight Road. That's right across the road from Coles. And I'm told a Starbucks will be opening up adjacent to our new Xfinity Store very soon. So keep that in mind as you begin your holiday shopping. And with that, I'm going to toss it to my friend, Vice President of Government Affairs for the Chamber, Jen Beer.
Thank you, Jennifer. Thank you to Comcast Business as well. And good morning, everyone. Yep, again, I'm Jen Beer, Vice President of Government Affairs with the Greater Pittsburgh Chamber of Commerce. Thank you all for joining us this morning for our discussion with three of our regional county commissioners. We're very excited to talk to Beaver, Green, and Westmoreland Counties about all the issues that are in front of them, economic development, infrastructure, workforce development. We'll likely hit on all of those issues, as well as sort of this common thread, and I know Matt alluded to this, of really getting our region even more so to speak with one region, one voice on all of these issues, particularly as we're looking ahead to harness a lot of the opportunities in front of us, especially some of these federal opportunities. So let's get into this discussion. I will bring up the commissioners one at a time. Feel free, folks, to unmute and put your cameras on. And as I introduce each one of them, I'll ask them to give them a few minutes of just a brief update, a state of the county that they're in, any opportunities and challenges in front of them. And then, as usual, we'll get into a little bit of Q and A and some discussion. And that's a reminder for all of you attendees, if you'd like to use the Q and A at the bottom of the Zoom, if you have any questions for the commissioners, as always, we will try to get to as many questions and topics as possible. We don't always get to them, but if you have anything burning afterwards, don't hesitate to shoot us an email or a note. But first, yes, let's welcome Commissioner Jack Manning. Commissioner Manning started his term in January of 2020, so not too long ago. But while he may be new to the particular role of Commissioner, I think we all know that he is not a new face from Beaver County. We worked with him for a very long time when he was at the Beaver County Chamber of Commerce. And he was also a founding member and Executive Director of the Beaver County Partnership for Community and Economic Growth. Commissioner, I know you're very engaged in a variety of activities in your county, including the United Way, the Community College of Beaver County, and many initiatives throughout the region. So feel free to please join us here now and offer some introductory remarks.
Thank you, Jen, and thank you, Matt, and thank you Comcast for hosting these events. It's a pleasure to be here, especially with my C cap colleagues from Westmoreland and Green with Mike and Gina. I look forward to collaborating with everybody in the region. And we do have a network between the commissioners that meet on occasion. However, my first term, and it's been 640 days in office, not though I'm counting, but 70 days into that, something called the pandemic COVID hit. And I haven't really gotten to know Mike and Gina or a lot of the people as well as we would like to. Actually, we just had our first County Commissioner Association of Pennsylvania live conference in August, where I did see Gina briefly and some of the other folks in our region to be able to have some face-to-face meetings. So it's been a little bit different than I thought it was going to be when I started office in January 2020 with that 70 days in holding a press conference declaring a state of emergency in Beaver because of that. And we've gone through a lot of ups and downs over that time. But I'm extremely proud of the resilience of the people of Beaver County and how we persevered through that. I'm happy to say that from a fiscal standpoint, the county's done pretty well. We're stable. People paid their taxes. We had the good fortune of having Shell Project, the polyethylene project, and 8,000 people continuing to work doing that when many small businesses and other firms were closing down, especially in our restaurant and hospitality businesses. But to take out and having 8,000 workers come into our county on a daily basis, 8,000 plus, really was a good fortune for us in Beaver County. I'm so glad that they were here and be able to do that. That project, by the way, is the construction is 90% complete. They still have about 8,300 people on site, but they're rapidly moving towards startup. But I think the one thing that COVID did that brought us together as a board, we bonded pretty quickly to be able to focus on the challenges and the opportunities that COVID exposed for us. So there's a lot of initiatives, and we'll get into the details, I'm sure, with some of the Q and A, but exposing issues like broadband, the issues that we had there. We had started to work on broadband before that. We had 71,000 households in Beaver County, and we knew that 2,000 of those had no access to the internet at all. So coming through COVID, whether you were trying to work from home, educate your kid from home, shop from home, entertain yourself from home, if you didn't have access to the internet, it was nothing significant an issue. So we've been working very diligently on that. We also have a court-mandated reassessment, which obviously is consuming a lot of time and energy. That was something I inherited, but we refinanced some debt. We did some bonds. Bond rating probably would have gone up if it hadn't been for COVID, but it stayed the same. We got those. And that refinancing has really helped us, in addition, obviously, to the CARES Act fund that we got last year. That helps stabilize any revenue loss we have, and that's why we're in good shape and don't anticipate raising taxes, you know, for the foreseeable future because of that. We can also debate the wisdom of whether the federal government should be giving Beaver County $92 million or not. But I guarantee if they're going to give it to us, we're not turning anything back. We're going to make sure we have the best use for the greatest benefit to our residents as possible. So there's a whole host of things that we're doing there. And I won't spend too much time getting into details, but broadband is one of those. Municipal water and sewer is another public health. We also have gotten that amount of money because we have some communities that have been disproportionately impacted by COVID. We have some stressed communities that have limited resources. So we're trying to do that. And then also some more revenue loss. But generally, we're in good shape. It's not always sunny in Beaver County, but it's usually mostly sunny most days. So.
That's great. Thank you, Commissioner. All right. Second, let's bring up Commissioner Gina Cerriely Thrasher. And we'll welcome back Commissioner Cerriely Thrasher. I know she's joined us for first Fridays in the past. She's a commissioner, actually, in my hometown of Westmoreland, and been a commissioner since 2016. I know that you're very passionate about workforce development programs. And I know you've also talked in the past to us about combating drug addiction in your county. So maybe some of those issues will come up and we'll talk about a little later. But also, I know, same as I think everyone else, economic development, infrastructure, also very big in Westmoreland. But similar to other guests, I took a look. You're on countless boards and task forces. So I'll just note a couple. You're on the Westmoreland Community Action Board. And also, great to see that you are part of the Westmoreland County Chamber of Commerce. So welcome back, Commissioner Cerriely Thrasher, and please feel free to offer some comments.
Great. Thank you. Good morning, everyone. First, I would like to start by thanking Matt, Jen, and the Greater Pittsburgh Chamber of Commerce for hosting myself and my county commissioner colleagues, Jack and Mike, this morning. I think you will all be impressed for what is going on in our respective counties right now. As opening remarks, I certainly cannot touch on every aspect of what's going on in Westmoreland. So let me just focus on a few key areas that you may find interesting. First, as many of you are aware, southwest Pennsylvania and the nation face a population challenge. The aging demographic is having a significant impact on our labor force. In Westmoreland, we decided to be proactive and address this issue. In 2019, we began the process of implementing a 10-year strategy, reimagining our Westmoreland. The primary focus of the strategy is investment on the economy, the workforce, infrastructure, and quality of life. Although we are currently setting the foundation for generations to come, we're already seeing a return on the investment right now. As a board member of the Westmoreland County Industrial Development Corporation, we continue to invest significant capital into land and building development directly or with our partner organizations, like the Regional Industrial Development Corporation, to ensure that we have sites and buildings ready to go to meet the demands of businesses today and in the future. Beyond real estate, Westmoreland, through its partners, continue to invest in our workforce and the skills necessary to support our businesses in the community. Our business calling program continues to identify workforce as the number-one issue businesses face. And I'm sure you're all aware of that and dealing with that right now in your own business. Addressing this issue requires a strategic approach to ensure our K through 12 students, the workforce of our future, are aware of the career opportunities available in Westmoreland County and in our region, and what skill sets or training or education is needed for the careers of the future in our region. We are doing this through the form of workforce development, or just the form as we call it, which is a collaboration of school district in Westmoreland County and surrounding counties, businesses and industry, higher education, economic development organizations, and others. The forum's goal is to create experiences and pathways for all students into meaningful careers within our region. Westmoreland continues to partner with higher education, like the Westmoreland County Community College and Penn State New Kensington. For those of you who have not been to New Kensington lately, I invite you to visit the city. Or better yet, schedule some time with myself, Jason Rigoni, our Executive Director of Industrial Development Corporation and Planning, and Kevin Snyder, the Chancellor of Penn State New Kensington. We can meet at Voodoo Brewing, talk with you about the city's rebirth, the investment that Penn State has put into New Kensington, and how their digital foundry will be the region's hub for everything Industry 4.0. We look forward to discussing what that could mean for your business in New Kensington and Westmoreland County. Now, none of this would be possible without strong infrastructure. Investments in road, air, and internet-related infrastructure are essential to support a growing economy. Westmoreland has a number of major surface transportation projects currently underway, including the modernization of I-70, including all-new interchanges, the start of the Laurel Valley Transportation Project that will open eastern Westmoreland and support the continued growth of the Arnold Palmer Regional Airport and Spirit Airlines through a direct connection to the Pennsylvania Turnpike. Speaking of which, the airport recently finished the widening and strengthening of the primary runway. The airport can now support any size plane. And our plan is to eventually secure flights to one of the large airports on the East Coast to connect our business community to the rest of the world with just one connection. And lastly, we are committed to investing in our broadband infrastructure. Although our network is relatively strong in Westmoreland, there are opportunities to upgrade and provide a robust system and services county-wide. Lastly, I would be remiss not to touch on the quality of life that we have here in Westmoreland County. From central Westmoreland, you can be in downtown for an urban experience, such as a sporting event or a concert. Or you can be in the Laurel Highlands, all within 30 minutes. And I think that's what I love most about Westmoreland County. I can have my city life and country life at the exact same time. Additionally, if you like to gamble, no need to push through traffic and going through the tunnels. Just come to Live Casino at Westmoreland Mall. And I would also like to add that Fort Ligonier Days, which is one of the biggest festivals we have here in Westmoreland County, is happening this weekend, today, Saturday, and Sunday. So please come out to Ligonier to enjoy Fort Ligonier Days. And I would also like to thank my colleague, Commissioner Doug Chu, who is also on this call this morning. Please feel free to reach out to us so we can continue a discussion how your business can eventually expand into Westmoreland County. So again, thank you so much for asking me to participate, and I look forward to the Q and A.
Thank you so much. I will second the Ligonier Days. I haven't been in a while, and that's a great call. Maybe I'll...
It's going to be 75 degrees on Sunday. So Sunday would be a great day. That's when I'll be there.
Okay, all right. Got it. Thanks. Okay. And for our third commissioner, I'd like to welcome Commissioner Mike Belding, who is Chair of the Green County Commissioners. Commissioner Belding has had a very distinguished career in the United States Marine Corps and served nearly 30 years as an aviation officer, a strategic planner, and he retired as Colonel in 2012. So thank you for your service, Commissioner. Similarly, an incredibly long list of boards and volunteer activities from the American Legion to the Ag Extension and 4H. And I also noted that your family has a farm in Green County. So that's wonderful. So welcome Commissioner Belding. The floor is yours for some opening remarks.
Thank you, Jen. And we certainly appreciate having the opportunity to advertise a little bit for Green County and discuss some of the initiatives we have. We're proud to be the cornerstone of the Keystone State. And although we're bordered on two sides by West Virginia and one on the Monongahela River, we really want to increase our initiatives within the region. And often, we feel a little out of the way compared to the more populous neighbors that we have, Washington to the north, and then, of course, all the way into Allegheny County, when we look at regional initiatives and so forth. So I appreciate the opportunity to be on this morning. Green County has a rich history in fossil fuel. And we've been the number-one coal producer for the Commonwealth and the number-four natural gas producer throughout that fossil fuel history. I won't dwell on the past for a long period of time, but it's important to understand that even as productive as our coal mines and natural gas wells have been, we still remain one of the poorest counties in the Commonwealth. And there's a lot of reasons for that that I won't belabor. But our demographics are certainly different than our neighbors. Over the past two decades, every measurable social, social, economic, and demographic has been in decline in Green County. The latest census pointed out that we lost 7.1% of our population in the last 10 years, and 62% of our workforce do not live in the county. We have a population of about 35,000 total residents in the county. So as one of the new two commissioners through a campaign in 2019 and appointed to office in 2020, we're trying really new, innovative, and open to any discussions to bring diversity into our economy. Green County has so much to offer. I grew up here. I left for 30 years. And of all the places that I lived over a 30-year career in the military, 11 different communities in the United States chose to bring my family back here in retirement. And my children actually graduated from the same high school that I did after we retired and moved back here. Green County really needs to determine in the future what we want to be. And everybody discusses the decline in fossil fuels and so forth. Our analysis is we have 30 years of coal industry left and probably longer of natural gas, but clearly, it is a declining economic driver in southwestern Pennsylvania. We do have potential to stay in the energy sector with solar power, natural gas-powered power plants, but there's also opportunities in light manufacturing, distribution centers, rural activities, and tourism. We literally are at the hub of a national highway system. I-79 runs north and south through Green County, and I-70 to our east or to our north, and 68 to our south run east and west. As we try to entice diversified businesses, we are increasing our quality of life, and we find that amenities will draw people. We recently broke ground on an outdoor recreation area that consists of 360 acres of leased property with a reservoir. We've planted softball fields, hiking, biking, and walking trails, and that will complement our Green River Trail that runs along the Monongahela River. We have initiatives at our airport that has been underutilized for this last several decades. And we should have water sport vendors, restaurants catering to waterfront communities along the river, and where millennials to retirees can enjoy kayaking, paddleboarding, and other riverside activities. And those are to be developed. It's kind of a blank slate or an open canvas out there on our river border. Our biggest win in the last two years is our successful implementation of broadband capabilities. In early 2020, we focused on feasibility study that determined underserved and unserved populations in Green County. As that data was available for planning, the CARES Act funding was initiated, and we invested nearly half of Green County's allocation in CARES Act funding with an industry partner that matched that and successfully brought 8,300 houses and businesses online with gig capability for high-speed fiber optic broadband. On the heels of that, we were recently granted a $2.5 million Appalachian Regional Commission grant for broadband, and an industry partner more than doubled that with their contribution. So that's an ongoing effort, but there have been several articles that kind of mark Green County as a model for rural broadband installation in the Commonwealth. And we're extremely proud of the accomplishments that we've achieved there. One of the initiatives for that is, although our job market and workforce may not be as diverse as we desire, we now give individuals the opportunity to live here but work anywhere else. So we're looking for opportunities for individuals to work in Boston, Baltimore, Seattle, Washington, via that telecommunications capability that we recently have and continue to expand. We've also taken advantage of other funding available through DCD, the Forgivable Small Business Program. We pushed out $1.2 million to small businesses in Green County. And through the CHIRP Hospitality Grants, $600,000 to stabilize the surviving local businesses in the county. We're also planning several applications for the Economic Development Administration federal funding. And we invite partnerships with all our neighbors, associations, organizations, and businesses to be a part of that. I think one of the roles of government is to provide diverse entrepreneurs, businesses, and industry, and environment in which to thrive and provide safe communities and education systems where families want to live, work, and play. And that's one of the focus areas of all of those subjects is to combine success to get people to stay here in Green County or to move here, whether it's a business or a family. The opportunities are endless, but we have, we're way behind in setting the right environment to encourage diverse entrepreneurs, businesses, and industry to come to Green County. We're wide open to innovative approaches to economic growth and stability and look forward to solving some of these challenges in the future. We invite everybody to Green County, whether you want to come down for a weekend festival, the county fair, and the other activities we have. And we continue to increase activities, trying to entice that diverse population into Green County. There are 1.1 million people within a 60-minute drive of Green County. And as we work to entice people to move here or engage in business here, we want to use that as kind of a tourism and destination population as well. Again, I appreciate being here this morning and look forward to future discussions.
All right. Thank you so much. All of those were wonderful opening comments. So thank you all for some of those county insights. So all commissioners, why don't you sort of come back up? And yeah, we'll get into a little here now. So let's start with an issue that you've all hit on and that's in front of us, I think, in a myriad of ways that we've talked about all of these different federal investment opportunities, right? So we've got the Economic Development Administration, the EDAs, regional grant challenge that I think, I think almost all of you touched on. We have the pending infrastructure bill. We have some other ARPA dollars that have already come down the pike a little bit. But maybe if you each could dig in a little bit more on how you see this.
But maybe if you each could dig in a little bit more on how you see this as not only opportunities for your county, but maybe for the region as a whole, anything you want to talk about and how you've already decided to deploy some of those dollars or some plans that you have or projects maybe hopefully in the pipeline. So, um, let's start with Commissioner Cerly Thrasher. Do you want to go first?
Of course, well, as, and I think as Commissioner Manning said, if the federal government's giving us all this money, there is not one county commissioner that's going to turn it down. So we'll take as much as they're ready to hand out for our community. It's very exciting to know that there is potential for a lot of different federal revenue streams for our county. I know that the E D A is being worked on by the Allegheny Conference and I know that there are a lot of things that need to be worked out through that. So hopefully, I can't comment on that because we don't have the final draft of that yet and exactly what's going to be needed to get all the counties to support that. But once again, it's all about regionalization and partnerships with the other counties. So I am looking forward to hearing that. On Westmoreland specifically, like the other counties, there are going to be some lifting from the federal restrictions on the American Rescue Plan dollars. Westmoreland is allotted to get a hundred and seven million, but some of those restrictions of what we can exactly use it for may be lifted by the end of the year. So right now we have a freeze on those dollars and we do not want to spend it until we know exactly what we can use it for. We are going to have a public hearing on October twenty-eighth to hear from the community exactly what they think this money should be used for. But right now we do know that broadband is, is one of the main things that we could use it for. And I know that we'll probably be talking about broadband a little bit later on in the Q and A. So I'll leave my comments for broadband for later on.
Thank you. How about Commissioner Manning?
Jen, uh, so obviously the federal infrastructure bill i- is important to all of us because despite the money we're getting through the American Rescue Plan and what we've got through CARES, the big capital projects can't get done. The roads, the bridges, the highways, um, you know, we need that federal support for that. Beaver County, uh, in three seventy-six is so critical to us and all of the shoot, offshoots of that. But we also have a lot of clock, uh, artilleries into three seventy-six through our communities. And we've been working with PennDOT and Southwest Planning, uh, Commission to, to get things on the table and earmarks for the federal government to kind of help us get over the hump on, uh, expanding those roadways and those opportunities with some of the congestion that we have. But when it comes to the American Rescue Plan, we, we, we're going to spend up to twenty million dollars on broadband. We've been working on this for a while. Comcast knows this because we've been engaged with them and the other providers i- in, uh, in the county on how to get that last mile to some of our more rural areas and how to maximize the, uh, quality and the reliability of those that do have, uh, internet service in some of our boroughs and towns and, and, and cities. Because some of the service isn't, um, where the U S Treasury is expecting to be, to, to be able to spend on, on broadband, that those connectivities, the upload, the download speed. So, um, we have a lot of effort underway with that. We will work with Baker Engineering. We've surveyed the county. We've not only done that, we've done cell towers, um, coverage with the three major phone providers in the area. With the help of Representatives, uh, Rob Batsey and Jim Marshall, there's a new small cell tower initiative that, that was passed. We think that will help us close some of those gaps so that some of the cell coverage can, can be better, um, across the county. So we have a lot of initiatives on that and that's probably our number one priority. As you know, the Ohio River cuts through the middle of Beaver County and the Ohio River formed a lot of legacy riverfront towns. And those towns have been around for a long time with a lot of aging infrastructure. Those towns on their own can't do that. The county has no capital funding for all of our municipalities. So we're really depending on the American Rescue Plan Act and again, the infrastructure bill to help with some of the aging water sewer, stormwater runoff and a whole host of issues there. We've got multiple initiatives, uh, going forward, uh, with, with those activities on our disproportionately impacted communities as well as, uh, other communities that, that just need, uh, something to get over the hump with capital spending in, in those areas. Public health is also something that we're investing at least five million in this first round, uh, of funding that we've got, gotten. And there's a lot we can do there. I, I think all this, and we had a couple of meetings on, uh, the fact that Allegheny County has a health department, but none of the rest of us do. And during COVID, we were really, uh, pushing a rope up a hill, tried to, trying to get resources, trying to get help, trying to get access to Harrisburg. We've had some informal conversations. It looks like the bill that allows, uh, health departments to be formed is a little too bureaucratic, uh, and it can't be a pick or choose. You gotta be all in or all out. And I think individually we decided, well, we gotta come up with another solution. So we're still working, I think, collaboratively on how we can have more input as the surrounding counties with Harrisburg and the Health Department to make sure we get the resources. I mean, Allegheny County has its hands full with Allegheny County. So we can't always rely, uh, on them in Green and Butler and Washington or Westmoreland Counties. So we're, so we're still working through that. But what we're trying to do is strengthen, uh, Heritage Valley Health System, which did great work for us during the pandemic. We're so fortunate to have them, uh, as well as some Allegheny Health and UPMC help there. But, uh, we're, we're doing a lot there. We had a, um, you know, mass vaccination site, uh, Community College. So we're trying to refund the Community College. Uh, and I'm sure Gina will attest to this. Uh, Community College has been flat funded by the state for way too long. They get very little capital funding compared to the state universities or the state-related universities. So we're looking at ways to help the Community College, which does a great job. And they collaborate. Community College, I mean, it's a great working relationship between Westmoreland and Butler and Beaver, uh, Community College, as well as, uh, uh, Allegheny Community College. So, uh, we need to invest more into them to keep them going and get over the hump on some lack of capital dollars and infrastructure. We have a world-class, uh, pilot and aviation and air traffic control program, I think, as you know, and that put, uh, the Community College on the map, um, many decades ago. Uh, and I eventually say that any airport that you probably fly into anywhere across the country as a graduate from, uh, the Community College is air traffic control program. So, um, we have issues with the control tower and, and that program. We want to make sure that that's, uh, onboard. Uh, a lot of work with workforce development. We do have a process technology center that, um, has been generously funded by, by Shell, that is trying to help with advanced manufacturing and process technology type, uh, programs. So we have a, have a focus on that as well, uh, as with the Community College. We are working on completing a men's homeless shelter, which was another significant issue. Beaver County is, is home to the largest Vietnam Veterans Association, uh, east of Mississippi. I've been told it's a huge, huge, uh, group. They are usually when they reach out to us in Beaver County, it's because of issues with homeless vets. And, uh, we've been working on this for a while. It's been a difficult road to home, but we finally have a location. We finally have a building and we hope it, um, to open soon, a twenty-first person, uh, men's, uh, homeless shelter, which just won't be warehousing folks. It'll have, uh, training activities and a way to get people back on their feet, getting moving in the direction that they were, uh, heading and, and making them a productive part of society again. So very excited about that process. So there'll be some funding that'll be going to that, um, is, as well. Uh, and then just one other thing that with, with some of this funding we hope to do, our friend Lou Valati, um, who is, uh, the Executive Director of the Beaver County Corporation for Economic Development. And through that board, uh, we are starting with Penn State Beaver and Innovation Hub. I've been to New Kensington. I have seen, uh, the work that Kevin has done there, Gina. And, uh, the Entrepreneur Programs, uh, and the Innovation Hub will become the Beaver County. With all of our small towns and all of the small retail businesses, they're actually coming back and doing quite well. Alakapa and Ambridge and Beaver Falls and Manaca. All of these small towns are really starting to come back, which you wouldn't think coming out of the pandemic, but it's exposed a lot of opportunities, a lot of property that's available. And we're producing a lot of entrepreneurs these days and that program helps facilitate, uh, that as well. So I'll, I'll stop there. You know, like you said, we could go on forever talking about all of these different initiatives, but th- those are the highlights of some of the big buckets of things that we're doing here.
No, thank you. I know I, I packed a lot into that question, lots of opportunities there. No, thank you for that. Commissioner Belding, thoughts from Green?
Uh, yeah, thank you. I think we're, um, focused on three areas with the buckets of funding and I won't separate them out between, uh, ARP and, and, uh, the infrastructure that's coming down that we anticipate, um, will really help us when it's focused on some of the things that we really need. But we're looking at infrastructure, workforce development and the increase in recreation and amenities. Again, to draw that crowd to Green County to participate in activities, tourism, and then influx some cash into our economic system that are not re- from residents, right? The traveling public that comes in here. So, um, really on infrastructure and this shocks people sometimes. We're still trying to get potable water in some of our communities. And whether it's a, an old system that's antiquated and, and needs significant repairs or a, a system that was not properly designed. You know, with the coal industry, there's a lot of disruption of surface water and well water that many of these residents over the last eighty years or so have relied on. And often these authorities, water authorities and so forth, kind of patchwork, uh, things. And there are significant numbers of residents that need help with that. And with the, um, inability to self-fund either through the municipality, the authorities or those residents who will find a water bill or sewer, sewer bill too high to, um, afford. This is a great opportunity for us to do some major projects and get some, some really good infrastructure put into place with, uh, new facilities, upgraded facilities and, uh, in some cases, new service, depending on where that is. Uh, that falls in line with water and sewage. We're fortunate, I guess, to have looked at this broadband problem in January, got onboard early with CARES Act funding and industry partners. In addition to the A R C grant that we just received, we put in for a N T I A, National Telecommunication Information Administration, eight-point-three million dollar grant. Their proposal is matched by, uh, industry partner. And if we would get that, um, we feel that we're good for broadband installation, not forever, but the time being, because the installation time right now, goes out so far that we can't foresee the next requirements, right? So we have more money stacked up against broadband installation than the industry can handle right now. If we get that eight-point-three million dollars, we'll be good for the next couple of years, which, um, we feel really good about. And it lets us focus on some of these other infrastructure problems that have been systemic in Green County for quite some time. Workforce development, you know, Blacksville number two on our southern borders just closed. So we lost four hundred mining jobs down there. Myland, which is in Morgantown, West Virginia, just closed fifteen hundred jobs, but many of those came out of Green County, um, that simply commuted across the line. So we're looking at opportunities to, um, work within the established programs. And in addition, we proposed an incubator for small business and entrepreneurs, partnership with Way- Waynesburg University and C M U for their business, uh, entities and coaching, if you will. The county currently owns a building. It needs, uh, a lot of work to it, but that will be, uh, in a empty building on Main Street in downtown, uh, Waynesburg, which has a lot of empty buildings. So we're trying to do a couple of things at one time, but, but bring that clientele in. And the proposal would be eighteen months or two years in this incubator facility. Once the business is up and running and successful, move them out, recycle that space for the next one. And whether it's online services or, um, telecommuting, uh, suites available for businesses, um, whatever that application is, working with the colleges as well. Also under workforce, we're working on a slaughterhouse capability. And this is interesting because if you're not attuned to the agricultural business, there is a significant shortage of slaughterhouse capability in southwestern Pennsylvania. As an example, if you have cattle steers right now that are born, you know, right now, you have to find a kill date for them in twenty twenty-three. And there's all kinds of examples of the inefficiency of not being able to do that and so forth. It's a complicated subject. Just know there's about two-point-six million dollars in the ask. It's a partnership with Penn State University in their, they have a butchering program and an apprenticeship program, um, under workforce development. We would look for money for that from the, um, either infrastructure or A R P funding. And there are other opportunities in workforce. Under recreation, uh, we want to finish out our Wise Carver Project. There's about a five million dollar delta in what we have and what we need out there. That'll entice folks to, um, come out to West Waynesburg in that recreation area and further develop some of our trails that is, that are established. There's an opportunity to cross into Washington County of the Green Cove Marina and Frederick Town. And continue that. So that's a little more regional approach, um, to what we're looking at for, um, for recreation. But we're, you know, like the other commissioners have said, we are thrilled that there's free money coming down, right? It's a lot of work to get in the process, the application, prove the concept. But it's not coming out of the county till. And just as a comparison, Green County is getting a total of seven-point-four million dollars of A R P funding compared to a hundred million or more to our neighbors. So, um, it's based on population. We have argued in Harrisburg that, um, although we're grateful for the funding we get, when we go down a country mile, whether we're putting infrastructure in or broadband, it costs more, not less, in Green County. And, and that formula may not be fair to the underdeveloped communities when you look at population prorated over money, right? So, um, I think everybody shook their head in Harrisburg too, but nothing has come up that formula that, yeah. But, uh, you know, certainly the opportunities are positive. We're going to work on a bunch of workforce, uh, infrastructure and recreation and, um, pull Green County forward for the future.
All right, no, thank you. Thanks very much. Um, I think, uh, one of the issues I want to touch on next is something that I, I think at least a couple of you, um, did hit on. And so when we're talking about all of these different initiatives, whether it's economic development or tourism or the types of activities that really, um, contribute to our region's overall health and vibrancy, you know, the underscoring issue that, you know, really kind of came down the pipe recently are these census numbers and the population growth or mostly here, lack thereof. So could each of you maybe just talk a little bit about sort of the, the issue, the issues in terms of whether it's economic development or I know a lot of tourism. But you know, with the lens of, of this, um, you know, the census numbers and how they're affecting, um, each of your counties or the different industry sectors. I know, um, you know, Commissioner Belding, you just talked about, um, some, some plant closures. And, and so how, how do all these things affect, um, you know, sort of our future? I don't know, you do want to, do you want to start Commissioner Belding?
Sure. It was a, it was a surprise to us that seven-point-one percent of our population loss over the last ten years. Uh, we thought it was larger, to, to be quite honest, we thought it was larger. In the western side of our county, um, there have been a lot of, uh, coal mine activities. And, and don't get me wrong, and we embrace the coal industry. That's our economic driver. Some of the school districts are at seventy-five percent tax revenue from coal. Uh, we can't live without that and, and, and we're, uh, in partnership with them and a lot of different things. But at the same time, when they buy up surface property and, and individuals move because they have cash, right, from a sale of property or a home, they generally don't resettle in Green County. So that contributes a little bit to the, the, uh, loss. Our tax structure is upside down and it, and it has been for years. We have five school districts that graduated a total of five, two-hundred-and-fifty children. So we're paying the infrastructure, the teachers, the, um, superintendents and their staffs and overage per student, um, when you look at the annual cost of the students. And that, that tax is a burden for property owners in the county. So none of that is going the right way, a population decline. If it's seven-point-one percent in the median household, the school district's probably seeing ten or eleven percent de- the school districts probably seeing ten or eleven percent decrease in students because everybody has one point two, five children, you know, whatever the statistics is. So it increases um uh at the school level. So taxes are prohibitive um to build new here. Our assessment baseline is based on a two thousand and three assessment. There's a formula to get you to what that current value of a house is and and it's pretty pricey. Um, so it really stifles development both in residence um residential business and and industry as well as a as a tax burden. It doesn't help that we're bordered by West Virginia, who's had substantially less restrictive um uh Department of Environmental Protection regulations. The taxes are less. The uh schools typically are better in quality of education and so forth. So we struggle with our neighbors there uh competing for uh residence business. And and it's pretty telltale when you come down to the Mason Dixon Line uh going south, and you see the activity south uh rather than north of of the border there. You know, the the interim, and I've discussed this briefly, the interim solution to that problem is to invite people here for our activities, um tourism, a destination and so forth, to influx cash into the economy to keep our businesses running, keep our hotels open, keep our uh restaurants running. While we try to sort out the rest of this, and it's a complicated problem in relieving individual tax burdens um over time. And uh, we're redoing our abatement uh program for a uh January one transition to uh graduated abatement instead of a five-year abatement for industry. And and there were a whole bunch of things, and it's a complicated problem. But we had a five-year abatement on uh industrial complexes, so people would build and stay for four and a half years. And then sell that project, and it started all over, and the county was never getting benefits from that that um uh industry investment. So um uh, yeah, the, I think a lot of our initiatives are to stop the flow of people leaving here and eventually entice people to move back here. Um, the last point on that is our lack of house housing inventory. There are a bunch of retirees and young folks looking for housing that's not available. Single-level living, two to three-bedroom, either retirement home or a young couple starting out. And we simply don't have the inventory because nobody's building houses. So um we're all in for ideas. Um, at one point, there was a Department of Energy discussion about building a model community with high efficiency. You know, they're gonna do an experiment. And we were like, pick us, pick us. And I don't know whatever happened to that, but the the county owns property. Um, there are developments already planned without buildings in them and so forth. It's just prohibitive right now, and we need to overcome that burden and get people to to be able to afford to build back in Green County.
Thank you. How about uh Commissioners really, Gasher?
Thank you. It it all comes down to jobs, 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 jobs. We have a population decline. And the way to keep individuals i- in their community is it is to give them a job. We have to make sure that there are jobs and that they are trained for the jobs of this region and this community. Um, you're not gonna have economic development. You're not gonna have recreation and tourism. If you, those industries can't function without without employees. And this isn't a result of COVID. A lot of people like to think that it is because of COVID that there are no employees. I mean, you go down Route thirty, go down through any highway. Every business has for hiring employees. And one, it actually just passed uh one of the local restaurants, and it says missing employees reward uh for employees. So again, this isn't a result of COVID. In two thousand seventeen, I believe this, it was either the Allegheny Conference or another economic organization said that in ten years, we were gonna have seventy thousand open jobs. So there's gonna be seventy thousand open jobs and not enough employees to fill those positions. And college isn't for everyone. When I'm talking to high school students, I like to talk to them about what are the industries in Westmoreland County in the region. And right now, what we're seeing for you to have a good-paying job, put food on the table for your family and have a low debt from college or from trade schools would be anything in the trades, anything in healthcare. We've also realized through the census that we have an aging population, which isn't surprising to anybody. But with an aging population, you're gonna have more hospital stays. You're gonna have more nursing homes. And we're having a really hard time right now, nursing homes in this region, getting enough staff, nurses, CNAs uh to be able to fill those positions in the nursing homes. So trades, healthcare and manufacturing, that's the future of this of Westmoreland County and of the region. Now, in Westmoreland County, we have the Advanced Technology Center at the Community College. And what that is, it it's training center for for the trades and in other industries as well. But you can go there for two years with a very limited debt and come out the day after you graduate, making fifty, sixty, seventy thousand, and then that just keeps going up. So I'm sure that there are a lot of individuals that have went to college for four years, are a hundred thousand dollars in debt from a four-year college, where they could be making more money if they went to a two-year degree like the Advanced Technology Center, maybe be five, six thousand dollars in debt and be able to make fifty, sixty, seventy thousand on day one as as a twenty-one-year-old. Um, who here has needed to get their house remodeled or had to call a plumber in the past year? One, you can't get on their schedule, and two, the prices have just skyrocketed. So really, the trades are where the future is here in in the region. We have an infrastructure bill hopefully coming through. That means with an infrastructure bill, that's even more jobs for the city of Pittsburgh and the surrounding counties. We have to make sure that we have a trained workforce ready to enter into those positions.
Yeah. And Commissioner Manning?
Yeah, Jen, you'll probably have to cut me off uh when this thing ends, but I'll go as quick as possible. You know, we've had decades of population decline in Beaver County. In nineteen seventies, we were two hundred, two hundred and ten thousand people. We got all the way down to a hundred and sixty. Uh, the projections um in twenty fifteen were that we were down to a hundred and sixty-three, a hundred and sixty-four thousand. We came in almost to where we were. So we we've actually started to trend up, and I I don't want to disparage the census data, but that census during the COVID did not capture. We have we have communities and numbers that just don't make sense to us because we have new housing starts happening all over Beaver County. Chippewa Township, Brighton Township, Economy, Hopewell. These are, these are all uh new housing starts, single-family homes. Uh, also fifty-five and older homes, uh people trying to flee the high taxes in Allegheny County. Uh, hint hint, coming into Beaver County where there's favorable tax, affordable housing. So we have that. Uh, rental property is scarce. Now, part of that is cracker plant uh related. Um, and we've had a bunch of new hotel starts. Our vision for the future o- o- on this is education and tourism and hospitality. We have a totally revamped uh tourism group, tourism board. We we managed to hire somebody who spent fourteen years at this in Pittsburgh. She understands conventions and those kinds of things. When the cracker plant folks go, we have a lot of hotel space. As you know, uh fifteen to twenty hotels were be built in Beaver County from when uh, you know, the cracker plant was announced to through construction. So we now have a a great capacity for small conventions, tourism, and we have a lot of green space. Again, we've got the Ohio River, we've got the Beaver River going through, we've got Raccoon State Park, Brady's Brady's Run, all these county uh facilities, historical um monuments. We've got trails uh and and the like. We're really trying to exploit that for uh inviting people in from a uh that for overnight stays, not just the you know, the internal maple syrup festivals and things like that 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 we do. Um, but to really bring in some tourism, get them to to come here. One of the things I'm very proud of, uh, if you'd have told me when I moved here, you know, twenty-plus years ago, that um the Community College of Beaver County, Geneva College, a private Christian school, and Penn State Beaver Campus, a state university, would be collaborating on how to work together for workforce development and to have graduates uh be trained in the skills necessary for the jobs of 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 this century uh and to retain those folks. Uh, you know, I never would have thought it would happen, but they are doing that. They form this Bridges and Pathways College uh partnership. They're collaborating. They have articulation agreements. There's a lot of collaboration like I've never seen before. And then if you look at our our K to twelve system, we have Centers of Excellence. Lincoln Park Performing Arts Center is attracting kids from eighty-one different school districts in seven counties in southwest PA. If your child is into performing arts or graphic arts or anything related to 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 that, they're going to Lincoln Park, and they're graduating uh seven, eight hundred kids a year. It's just, it's a center of excellence. We're trying to create more of those Centers of Excellence around our our Career and Technology Center. As Gina says, I couldn't agree more. Construction is booming, but the building trades are hurting uh for talent. And we have a lot of momentum and collaboration with our with our fourteen school districts on how to leverage resources and how to make sure we create Centers of Excellence for the healthcare areas, the engineering of air traffic control uh and the construction area. So there there's just so much going on uh in that, and Beaver County is starting to trend up in in its population, which very proud of.
Yeah, and a focus, I can't believe that we're at time. Of the issues that I had hoped so. Um, and there were so many questions. So maybe we'll have to have you back for a second. A second round of First Friday. Um, thank you all so much for joining us. Um, if you have a a ten-second, is there any last comments that any of you wish to make, any issue that you wanted to point out? I can give you ten seconds if anyone had final closing.
One, real quick uh uh on this, part of uh we don't want the K to tw- twelve system. Uh, we have John Schopkin's University, and they're doing a study. They're gonna come ways to see how education, what education can look like in twenty thirty uh uh on an equitable basis. We have inequitable educational opportunities across our fourteen school districts. So we're working very hard uh the the whole process is, how do we find equitable educational opportunities to prepare our youth for the future in careers? And it's an important aspect of of what we're doing.
And and Jen, I I just want to say thank you. Um, I would love to come back. Hopefully, we can do it in person the next time. And if anyone out there wants to continue the conversation with myself and my colleagues in Westmoreland County, please feel free to reach out. Our contact information is on the county website, so I look forward to talking how your business can expand into Westmoreland. Thank you.
Uh, thanks from Green County too. I I appreciate being included. We don't look a lot like our neighbors. But we like that, right? So we have different uh positive attributes to contribute to the region and so forth. We're we're trying to explore a whole bunch of ways to get fiscally more sound um and better from uh some of the things that we haven't worked on quite as hard in the past. But as Gina said, if anybody wants to individually reach out to me, we're on the Green County website. Um, I have conversations like this daily, particularly around some of the harder topics like uh school taxes and and infrastructure and so forth. I'd be glad to continue that conversation. Thank you.
And please, everyone, take a trip out to the lower Highlands this weekend. You won't be disappointed coming out to Ligonier Days.
Ligonier Days.
Shameless plug there.
No, that's great. I I I love it. Uh, well, thank you all so much for joining us this morning, Commissioners. Um, thank you to all of our attendees. Um, and a final thank you, of course, to Comcast for sponsoring our First Friday series. Quick note that our November first Friday will be on November twelfth. Um, so stay tuned for your email updates, and we hope to see you then. Have a great weekend, everyone. Thank you.